Good morning, everybody. Today is Thursday, January 30th, 2025. We're here today for a work session agenda. As we start all our meetings, we start with the pledge. Will be please rise. Pat, would you mind leading us in the pledge?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pat. Appreciate it. Okay, before we get started with the open session, we received some really good news this week. And Dawn Thomas, the director of our CDA, hopped in her car bright and early in the morn- uh, dark and early in the morning, I should say, and rode up to Schenectady, New York, met with the governor, and was presented with a couple dollars. So we would like to have the CDA come up here and explain, and I believe we have a nice copy of the check to bring up with us to show off. Because once again, our fabulous CDA has garnered some money for the downtown revitalization, including the town square and some money for the Suffolk Theater, so.
Yeah, so you want a quick overview of the project? I know you guys are familiar with the project.
Yeah, absolutely.
As you know, the town square has multiple components. One of those components is the amphitheater project. We had only received money for design, preliminary design, which is completed now. So we had that, we have that done, but there's still a tremendous amount more work to do and money to spend on that project. And so we applied over the summer with the board's permission for funding through New York State Empire State Development's Pro Housing Program, which the board signed on to. It gives us access to substantially more money than other communities that don't sign on to the Pro Housing Program. So we had access to, I think, forty-four million extra dollars. The governor's putting another hundred and something million into that program this year. She's, her, her, she actually used carrots as a prop, like real carrots as a prop in her presentation. She, rather than a stick, which she was trying to, you know, they wanted to change the zoning of the local governments, and that was very poorly received. They are now using incentives to do it. And so in order to qualify, you have to sign on, which we did. It provides funding for creative place making and infrastructure that supports our housing. So the amphitheater project is viewed as a, you know, creative place making, support to the community where we have been providing housing. And we additionally received another two-hundred thousand or Suffolk, one-eight-seven or something for Suffolk Theater's water infrastructure that they need for their project. And so we'll continue to look for projects to apply for.
That's also going to help us too with the parking garage, with the water.
Yes, absolutely.
I was gonna say, like, I did see on, I don't like to respond to non-statistical comments on Facebook, but there were people, you know, that was, that were complaining that the Suffolk Theater and that water infrastructure supports many more projects downtown. So it's not, it's, it's an important project for the town, not just one private project.
No, I know. People, people like to comment without knowing the facts and the truth, and we're used to it.
So if we can reduce the cost of housing by providing, you know, grants for infrastructure through this program, then that cost reduction will be passed through to the, to the residents, and so that's what we're looking to do. So we were awarded one-point-four million for the amphitheater project. We still need more money. We'll be looking to private and public sources for that again, so, but a great start, certainly not jump change for sure. And so that's, that's our announcement.
Absolutely. Well, we know we have the best CDA team around. We appreciate all that you do and the hard work because, and again, the average person doesn't know what goes into a grant. And I honestly, as a councilman, I wasn't all that familiar with it. But I've learned now in talking to you and you showing me how it's, it's, it's quite involved. The paperwork's incredible. I mean, you come up with signatures for me all the time, stacks of paperwork. It's like, wow. I mean, you gotta sit and go through everything, and it's, it's lengthy, and you have to know what you're doing. And apparently you do, because we seem to be getting a lot of money, and that's a great thing, especially for our downtown area.
Well, I'm aware too, you guys being supportive of the projects, moving them forward. Public support's also important. The, the people that are given the money want to make sure that we all, you know, we've done the stakeholder discussions. We've done that preliminary work, and, you know, you guys have been incredibly supportive to us too, so we really appreciate that.
You guys are the most successful financial team for this town to benefit us and to carry us into the future. So you are all immensely and greatly appreciated for your work. And we'll just keep, we'll just keep giving you more projects. We got one right after you.
We all agree it's a labor of love. We love our town. We like to work, and this is great to do, so it's super rewarding. I mean, they gave you a check for a million bucks.
Gotta hold that check up. We gotta show everybody.
Can we get a nice picture with you guys and the check?
Sure.
Okay, great. This is one of our smaller checks, but. But it's a, it's a great, it's a great kid.
Okay, from one exciting thing to another exciting thing, we're gonna have the people from Riverhead Volunteer Ambulance Corps come up, and we're gonna discuss their new RV vac, RVAC building. And Councilman Rothwell, you wanna?
Yes, so we are fortunate to have some of our top volunteers here from RVAC. This is a project that has been long overdue. It might even be an attempt to keep the CDA busy. But back in 1989, the original building was built, and like every other thing that has transpired over the years and as the town has grown, this is a long overdue necessity for the town, so we, these men and women are providing life-saving actions here within our town, and we as a town board and the supervisor need to always provide them with the proper tools to do that, to perform that job. So we are here today to talk about building a new ambulance building here in the town of Riverhead. This will also help us to meet requirements from the state and OSHA and other regulatory agencies. So with that in mind, I'll turn things over to our president. I think he's got a good way to explain how this project's come about and why it's such an important necessity. Garrett?
Thank you. First, thank you for allowing us to have the opportunity to sit before you and speak about replacing the new headquarters. As many of you know, our current headquarters was built in 1989 with the Jamesport substation, prior to that in 1985. At that time, our dedicated volunteer ambulance team was responding to approximately eleven-hundred calls per year. Fast forward to today, our call volume has surged to an impressive fifty-five-hundred calls annually. This significant increase speaks volumes about the growing demands of our emergency medical services and highlights the need for a facility that can adequately support our operations. Currently, we have around a hundred and fifty active providers, thirty of which are paid in the logistical staff, which both paid and volunteered. Our fleet consists of five advanced life support ambulances, as well as two first responders, two chief's cars, specialized all training equipment, and an ambulance and first responder provided by Stony Brook University Hospital. Unfortunately, our existing facility, which has served us well in the past, is no longer sufficient. In fact, we are unable to house two of our ambulances and two first responders in trailers indoors exposing them to the element and increasing risk of equipment failures and compromising medical integrity. Ambulances represent a significant investment, costing approximately for a new ambulance six-hundred thousand and three-hundred-and-sixty thousand for remounting, which the board has chosen to go that way to, as a cost-saving measure. With two of our ambulances currently sitting outside with external heating units, meaning space heaters, we face a constant worry of equipment damage, which make remounting an old box more costly and our blown circuit breaker, because the building was never meant to have so much raw on it. One faulty heater could spell disaster, resulting in the loss of hundreds of thousands of dollars or thousands of dollars in medications and risking the safety of our community. Moreover, our facility currently at twenty-nine-hundred square feet is under the scrutiny of various regulatory bodies, including New York State Part Eight Hundred, OSHA, and Americans with Disabilities Act. We are simply unable to meet the necessary standards due to our current building's limitations. One of the most pressing challenges we face is compliance with America, Americans with Disabilities Act. We have members and members of the public with disabilities who cannot safely access our building. Our classroom space, which only allows for one means of egress, is inadequate for training. Our, for training our volunteers, effectively forcing us to hold classes at the new Riverhead Town Hall, which we thank you very much for allowing us to do. We are incredibly grateful to the Riverhead Town Board for facilitating our meetings with an architect and the guidance of Supervisor Hubbard and Councilman Ken Rothwell to design a sixteen-thousand-six-hundred-square-foot building that will meet our needs well into the future. This building has no frills, just a safe and secure building with classroom, meeting room, bunk rooms, decon room, bathrooms, and offices. Today, I respect the request that the town board take the necessary steps to move forward with the requests for proposals, RFP process, enabling us to establish a clear understanding of the project's costs. That this new facility will not only enhance our operational capabilities, but also ensure that we can continue to serve our community effectively and safely. Thank you for your time and consideration, and we're happy to answer any questions.
So the design work went in here with obviously members of their board, but also they continuously took those plans back to their members and got, and through meetings and shared insights, the plans have been, you know, revi- revitalized as, as time goes by to, to make sure that we're accommodating everyone. And we have all different, especially here when you have the people that are actually working and utilizing the facility on a regular basis. But volunteers come with all different backgrounds as well, and so, and everyone sharing thoughts. So I think we came together with some great work, so the committee did a great job. So we'd like to put some of the drawings up, Justin, if we can put them up on the TV. And the first thing that you're looking at is the first facade of the front of the building. And so, and then we'll kind of just go step by step. If anybody else wants to walk us through the process at all, or be explained. Yep, and we have the architect here as well, if you want to take a moment to introduce you.
Yes, I'm the architect. My name is Todd O'Connell from T O C Architects. I've been working with Riverhead Ambulance Corp. now for approximately over six months, going back and forth with, you know, different designs and making sure we accommodate all of their needs. And those are the plans that are before you as the result of meeting with the, the corp and.
Just people, before we go in, like, you know, in the design process of this, it was important, the first thing we, we took a good look at was the location itself. And so the site that we currently have is very limited in size, but I think the board unanimously agreed that it was the perfect location, wanted to stay there, because it really is in the heart and central location for response times. And that's ultimately what they're always concerned about is response time. So sometimes people say, well, why don't you just go to a different site, different location? Well, we don't want to change response times, because they're doing a phenomenal job. And so we want to stay on the same existing parcel of land. So during construction, there will be some difficulties for maybe a gen- general time, but maybe six months or so that, you know, the, the building, it is a complete tear down. It is too cost prohibitive to try to add on and try to, you know, use any type of, it's better and more cost effective as we've learned to just start with a clean slate. And so that's kind of one of the things that we're looking at.
How are you gonna operate during construction?
Well, there's talks with Ken Rothwell here that we would maybe move next door and set up like a little makeshift camp of some trailers. And it's gonna be rough for the first, you know, for six months to a year. No, it's gonna, it's definitely gonna be rough. But I think we, you know, we're gonna have to make do, but I think we're gonna have to work out of trailers like our, our business.
Yeah, if we get a couple, excuse me, if we get a couple of double wides together, it's about the space that we have now. And it'll accommodate. The only difference would be, everything would be outside versus four vehicles now, it would be all of them. So we'll have to obviously pay more attention to temperatures and things like that, but it's, it's definitely doable. It'd just be a little more work, that's all.
And so we're, we're gonna hope, and we, we have not had, you know, talks yet with our highway superintendent, but we're gonna hope that we can partially use, you know, some of the property within the, within the highway yard, just on a temporary basis for location. And so we'll sit down and we'll have meetings with Mike and see how we can come back to fruition. We do have, may need to move maybe a second rig or something over to Jamesport, right? And so to kind of use that as well and kind of divide up, they'll figure a method of how volunteers will respond and to which location may be based on, on where the call is. And so, and we may even have to have a third location, you know, but, so it'll be a hardship. But in the end, this is the right thing to do, because the services that will be provided in the long run is the best.
And for the public, part of the cost of this is gonna come from monies with the insurance claims. That you're now claiming, or you're putting in claims for all calls rather than just motor vehicle accidents. And we're not the first to do that by any means. And nationwide, I read an article yesterday talking about how voluntary ambulance corps up in, like upstate New York and more rural areas are just folding up and closing. They just can't do it. And, you know, with this, we're gonna be able to expand, you'll be able to increase the number of people you have. I imagine one day Vice President Oliver is gonna have a Tesla ambulance out here. It, you know, will be battery operated and, and good to go, but this is a great, it's a long time coming. We've been talking about this for a long time, and now everything's starting to kind of line up. So I love the design, and, and, and what's important to me, and you, you hit the nail on the head, it's not a Taj Mahal. I have seen other ambulance headquarters around the county, and some of them, maybe they're very wealthy districts, but to me, it was a lot of overkill. This is exactly what you need, and you guys did not put in for all the frills and, and everything that you could have. So I really appreciate that, as I'm sure the taxpayers do also.
You know, it's a building that a volunteer can go to their shift at midnight, put their head down on a pillow, and still be able to go to their job in the morning feeling rested and safe. Because right now, our building is not, you know, it, it gets open to the public on some occasions. You know, someone forgets to leave, shut the door on the way out to a call, the building's open. So this new building has a lot of safeguards to stop if, if we did leave a big ambulance door open. You know, somebody can't just walk around the other parts of our building. So it's, it has more safety in mind than anything else.
The level of training that's been required and grows continuously year after year, you know, you don't become an EMT and a paramedic, and then that's it. It's this constant renewal of training, constantly upgrades. And to take our volunteers and to send them off to different facilities, which really means that we're taking away from the RVAC building. And so we're putting them further away from the response. So to be able to have trainings in-house at the facility where their ambulance is located, if they have to pause in a minute in the middle of training to go run out on a call and so forth, that's where we want them to be. As opposed to having them go through other places throughout the county, which means they're no longer right there at headquarters. So we want to keep our training rooms, our conference rooms, and all of that located at the facility where they're responding from.
And it keeps more people in-house. So when we have multiple calls, we're able to handle multiple calls, because everybody's in-house training, not spread her up, spread out through the county.
I mean, could we, we do thrive off of students, right? You know, we have a lot of students currently in medical programs, and this building will afford them a quiet place to study. And like you said, when that hall goes out, they can jump on an ambulance and handle the call and come back and go back to studying. Right now, they're, they come down, it's too noisy, because there's no place for anybody. And then they go to the library down the street, and they're less likely to go on a call, but, so.
And to clarify for the public, what the supervisor referred to before is that what they're really building for is the transport, you know, the transport calls. And that's, that's specifically, you know, bringing a patient from place of injury or location, you know, to the hospital. And a lot of that is covered through means of insurance. So they, up until the work that we've been doing today, they've been self-sufficient, so we want, want the public to know that. So we're using some of that funds to hire the architect to do these plans, as well as the, you know, part of that, that funding is allocated for upgrades of equipment. So we do have new ambulances that, they're just mandatory. You have to, you have to replace them. They're just outdated. They're, and, and, and then the safety factor come in. So these are high, high response vehicles that are being used. So, and the cost of ambulance equipment is just drastically rising on, on every year basis. And so we need to protect that equipment, you know. We got a gator that, because we respond to calls on beaches and so forth, but we need to know that, that when we get those, and that was through grant money, that we, we keep that equipment and we protect it, and we keep it indoors. And when we're putting items in trailers and other places, it, it slows the response downtime to unbutton a trailer, get things out, get rolling. We just want to be able to, to go. And so that's, that's part of the key on that. So we want to go over some of the plans a little bit. We'll show.
I'm sorry, what's the square footage of the building? Is six thousand?
The current building that we're now is.
Sixteen?
Sixteen thousand. So that's, that's the, we're at our max. That's it.
That's, that's fantastic.
Can't go any bigger.
Supervisor, you want a set of plans to look at as they go through it?
Well, I'm, yes.
Because quite honestly. It's kind of small over there. I see squinting. My arms aren't long enough to be able to read it.
Yeah, well, Justin, you want to put the plans up on the TV for us as well? To look at this, but Justin also looks at the drawings as well. So we wanted to provide ample parking for volunteers, handicap parking as well. The entire building will be ADA compliant.
Yes.
Still working within the same parameters. So it took some uniqueness and revisions to keep on the same footprint, utilizing the same site. Things that we'll be looking at by, we're gonna ask the board's permission to put together an R, you know, put out a resolution for an RFP to determine the overall cost of the project, but we've had meetings and communications with Michael Reichel. You know, we have sewer that comes down on Route Fifty-Eight, so we know that that's in the approximate range. And just, you know, we'll have the professionals determine the final amount, but we're probably looking at like a half million dollars if we went to sewer. So with this RFP, we'll probably, we'll ask for different options, whether we'll compare septic to sewer as well. But also having, keeping all the equipment inside the facility, all the necessary bays, and having a wash bay as well, and how to treat, you know, any fluids and so forth that come off of ambulance, off of just even road salt and other things through a trap system. So we want to be able to keep our equipment clean and also worry about what's in the ground, so that this, this takes us, that all environmental concerns into a new level as well.
When, when you guys, when we were in the midst of COVID, you didn't have a decontamination unit in the building, and it made it very difficult for your members to come back from a call and get properly cleaned off. And then chances are, in the middle of that cleaning process, you had to go out on another call during that time period.
I think the biggest issue there was the, the contaminating the entire building, because there was no, once you come back from a call, you park in the current bays that we have, there's no decon area, so you go into the building, which now contaminates the entire building for everybody else. So we definitely learned a lot through COVID on what we did not have.
Oh, sure.
One of the biggest things, just to touch on the COVID, was the fact that we had, you had a fever, they were sending you home, and they were telling you, well, at some point, they were realizing we didn't have enough personnel to answer calls, and now they were ordering people back to work. The problem was, is like, if you still had COVID, but you may have been not symptomatic, there's no way to separate that personnel. So we had, you know, half, half our personnel had, currently still had COVID, half didn't. But there was no place to split, okay, you guys are gonna respond from over here, this side of the building, and there was no way to separate them, which was a big problem, because now we're just getting everybody else sick. So that, that was, in our opinion, the biggest thing that we realized during COVID was there's no, no separation of personnel.
Correct. And the new building has a decontamination room, so.
Excellent. And so also, just to mention, just while we look at the site plan too, they do want to honor some fallen members as well, and so we know Heidi Baer and maybe perhaps others that have. And so we'll look at, like, currently in front, there's a, there's a small memorial, and so we want to do something a little bit more nicer in the back for them, right, to, to enhance that, keep that, so that we're always showing a good remembrance of those that gave the ultimate sacrifice as well. And so there'll be a place for that too on, on site. Do you want to go page by page, or if anybody more want to add to the site plan?
Well, we'll just start in with the first floor here, with the bays, just the bays themselves. We have three bays right now where we can store three ambulances with this. It's gonna give us five bays at a double deep, so we were able to put ten vehicles in, plus we have the contamination bay if we needed to use it for storage.
So Justin, you want to bring up that first floor plan on the TV so the public can see of the outline of the bays? There you go. That's what we're looking at in terms of storing apparatuses.
Correct, and those are actual dimensions of the apparatuses that they currently have. So you can see how they, you know, easily fit in the space with room to be able to mobilize around the units.
So there are standards that are set like OSHA, OSHA puts, you know, a distance, like, I believe it's like four feet between apparatuses, mandatory requirement. So it, you know, just for safety, as one, one ambulance is rolling, and they may be approved going up on a second ambulance. Sometimes it's often, you have motor vehicle accidents, you have multiple vehicles rolling out of the garage at the same time.
Can I just ask a question? Just currently, is that the number of vehicles that you have?
Yes.
Most of them are outside.
Right. My concern is, is this big enough, considering all the other apartment buildings and everything that.
So we, we include it for expansion, and three of those vehicles are trailers. So if we needed to move the apparatus out of the trailers and put the trailers outside to expand, if we needed to expand our fleet, we can do that. So we do have room for expansion. This is ideal, this is in a, in a perfect world. But if we do start expanding and buy more apparatus that has to go inside, we're able to move some of this stuff around to make room for that.
Somewhere in the future too, the, the possibility of maybe a Calverton area substation should be, I know we've talked about it. And this will help for now, but as the town continues to grow, that may be another option we have to look at way down the road.
We're already seeing more development on the west side of town and response. You guys have been doing a great job in over there, but, you know.
This also does not include putting anything in Jamesport. So if we needed to store something in Jamesport, we could move it out there as opposed to keeping it stored inside here.
Yeah, so this has all of our rigs.
Right. And you, you got to remember the vast territory that they're covering, you know. And so they're, they're covering Mattville, they're covering when you go to the water park and the ice rink and so forth. You know, we, we, we think that that is, you know, in the area of Calverton, but that's all being covered by RVAC. And so.
And the day that EPCAL gets a build out up there, it's, you know, it's gonna be that much more, so.
And that's when we'll certainly be sitting down again, considering a second substation up there, which would relieve some of these vehicles to go for the west. So in, in general, you just have a dispatch room down below, if you want to kind of just go over some of the things. So, you know, they, they put a lot of heart and soul in, in, in the best way that the dispatch room is continuously can be viewing, the ambulance, what stores are open, closed, how we go in and out, how the public proceeds through it. So there's a lot of thought process in this.
Yeah, the, the first floor consists of, as I mentioned, a decon room, a dispatch room. You know, it has a recreation room area, you know, for everyone, it has a nice lounge area. So, you know, so this way, the facility can be used for all purposes, and.
And there are requirements by the state. So when we say recreation area, the state requires that we have like gym memberships and so forth. So it's actually a cost effective to have our own little facility where we could put some of our own exercise devices and so forth in there, which is required by the state, and that's a lot more cost effective than trying to go out and buy a hundred and fifty memberships, you know, to a local gym, so.
And the rec room here is more, I would say, the living room. It's like what we have now, it's where TV, sofa couches, where people, it's more of a ready room.
The standby room.
Yeah, standby rooms, where the members would go and sit and watch TV until a call comes out.
And then obviously, as you saw in the first floor, that's where we have up to, you know, ten bays. And then we also have a, you know, a wash bay for, as well, which could be used for expansion as well. On the second floor, we have a men's and women's bunk room. We have a training room, so they no longer have to use the, the town facilities. Have, a training room would be on site along with a, a fitness area. And we also have on the second floor some offices, as well as a conference room, and really just, you know, everything that more of a need, men's and women's bathrooms, you know, trying to make the space comfortable, comfortable for all the volunteers.
The sheer cost of equipment, even in training, when you get the mannequins and so forth, that when you're teaching through EMT school, paramedic school, all these devices that they have, they need a place to put it. It just, it can't go on the garage floor anymore, you know. We need, we need cabinets, we need room to protect this expensive equipment.
Have an elevator?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there a place for them to rest, like sleep?
Yes, there's two bunk rooms, a men's and a women's bunk room. All right, with, with bathrooms and, you know, attached to the bunk room, so. All right. With bathrooms and, you know, attached to the bunk room. So.
And I think we've got some facades up on the screen. So that's the front of the building. Kind of tried to stay within the RVAC colors for years.
Correct. The, the building is, consists of just, just regular party plank siding, which is a cement siding. It's, we've incorporated some stone accent to the building. Again, we're not trying to go crazy with it. We're trying to keep the building simple, cost effective. You know, you can see on the right side where all the windows are, that's obviously the office and bunk rooms. And basically the bays were all to the left side. Now over the bay area on the second floor, there was a mezzanine that will, on the back half of the bays where you'll, you know, people are up there. You could actually see down onto the bays, which is a, you know, a nice look as well. And.
I said, it means we got to wash the top of the ambulance down.
Yeah, exactly. You do, right? And, you know, it's a metal roof on building, standing seam metal roof. And that's, that's about it for the design of the building itself. Just all the different views. The other doors that you'll go to the back. So in case you want to bring a truck for some reason out to the back of the building, you have the opportunity to do that. So you see the couple of doors, overhead doors facing the back.
And it helps with ventilation as well.
Correct.
So multiple vehicles running out, you have ventilation simply by opening the back door, letting the air flow through.
So Gavin, collecting insurance, how's that going?
It's going, it's going good. It was a slow start. We were waiting on an updated claim. Took a long time to get our medicator and medico. But we seemed we're, we're right up, had to give an update on what we collected so far.
To date or this year?
To this year and to date.
I don't have the to date numbers. This year we've collected, I think it's a little over 100,000 for the month of January.
That's good.
So far.
Wow. Wow. That's good.
So we have the potential to collect a million dollars a year basically, right?
Well, we did that already last year. So it's going to be, I believe it's going to be well past that. Now that we're getting into it and we're, we're kind of tweaking the system and making sure we get, you know, our full potential out of it.
And so we would be looking to put together a resolution. So I'd ask for the town support to put out an RFP. So we know now in terms of the design work of what we need. And again, we've kept it as minimal as possible to meet their needs, to be most cost effective, cost efficient. So with the RFP, you know, we'll write it in such a manner just to get, you know, compare septic versus sewage, all the basic design works. And once we have a final total, then we'll be having multiple meetings with our financial administrator. And so Janet is here as well to, to, to add any comment. But the goal would be a fundraising campaign. So, and, and we'll decide on the method of how, you know, the RVAC volunteers want to go ahead. Whether we want naming a bays or just, you know, we want to put perhaps we thought maybe in the lobby where we can put plaques for those, you know, that contributed to the overall facility. So between fundraising efforts and between the insurance collections, you know, through transports, you know, we think this is a project that can go ahead with, with a very minimal impact to the taxpayers. So we don't want people to think, there they go build another building, whatever. But this is, this is a necessity. It's required by law that, you know, we, we need to upgrade our facilities to meet all the, all the requirements of today. And we're going to do it with a very, very limited impact to the taxpayer. And when, and when somebody is in stress and you, and you need that, that, you know, heart attacks, other things that happen, you need that ambulance. You want, you want the best crews, which we have, and the best equipment. And we want to protect that equipment to respond to every scene.
So even if you bonded this, right? So you took in a million dollars. That's gross. What is, is that also, what's the net on that?
So it's the, the net, well, so 20% of it comes back to vehicles for the town. It's, we have different accounts with the town that we take portions of that money to set aside for equipment. So the equipment, as Councilman Rothwell has already stated, is ridiculously expensive now.
Six hundred thousand for an ambulance.
Yeah, we, well, I mean, even not an ambulance, a stretcher and an ambulance costs us $35,000 now. They used to be 20,000 three years ago. Now cardiac monitors, which all of ours are out of date now, are now $61,000 versus the 30,000 that we paid the last time we, we bought them. So, and that's, that's hard equipment. That's not even supplies that have doubled and tripled in price. So it's with the money that we're bringing in from billing, it's hard to parse out how much of that is net. Because we're setting aside money for all of these different, different equipment. So we would have to sit with the town and see exactly how.
To put the cost of that equipment to put in an ambulance to leave outside just doesn't make sense.
No, of course not.
We're doing it with the police and with the fire marshal right now, and they're losing because of the temperature differential, you know. It's, they've had to order new equipment and I'm sure you're in the same scenario. I guess where I'm going with this is that even if we bond this, it's not, then to, to the councilman's.
I think the debt service we would be able to cover.
That's what I'm, so that's where I'm going. So.
I just wanted to add something too, is that, you know, this is a community effort with the ambulance. You know, if it wasn't for Peconic Bay Medical Center, Amy Loeb, you know, they, they do cover all of our medications. So that's a huge savings to the taxpayers.
Tens of thousands of dollars a year.
You know, the, the public should know that Peconic Bay Medical Center, their hospital covers that for them. So.
And they've also agreed to partner with us to help us with any fundraising that we want to do with them. So we have support of Amy Loeb, Peconic Bay Medical Center, and as well as the town board. So I think right now is, we've never seen a better opportunity to get done what we need to get done as far as what we need.
Yeah, let's get it going.
And with a high volume of calls, they do reach out to others. You do also have, Stony Brook University Hospital does provide an ambulance in some of the busier times and so forth. And it's just simply, and so, but we don't want to leave them out in the parking lot. You know, when they, when they come and they, they have the same medical equipment in their vehicles, they're equally worried about. So we need to know that they have a facility, you know, place to put and safeguard their equipment as well while they're, while they're here on standby.
Because they have to leave their, their vehicles running while they're here, especially in the cold temperatures. So, you know, their, their service to us is not costing the taxpayers anything. But it's costing them money because they're leaving their trucks running the whole shift because their temperature has to be at a certain, you know, epinephrine, you know, the life saving for cardiac arrest. It has a temp, temperature differential. So, you know, 10 degrees either way, the, the medication can be not effective. So, you know, if there's, this building is going to solve hopefully a lot of those issues too.
I think it's great.
And we've got equipment as simple as glucometers for blood glucose. When they hit a certain temperature, they don't work anymore. And even with the heaters that we have inside the ambulances, when it's really cold like it was last week, the heaters can't keep up with the temperature. So we have a problem with equipment that we have to keep rotating or buying new equipment. And it's not, you know, $60,000 for a glucometer, but it does add up after a while when you have to keep replacing this stuff.
And that's if you can get the equipment. I know with the, the refits for the ambulances, it's like a year and a half out. It's ridiculous.
And, you know, I do want to say thank you guys, you know, and I'll just speak on behalf of the board is that this town board has probably been one of the best I've ever worked with. And, you know, speaking with Keith and Bruce, hands down, you guys have been the best. So, you know, the public should know that we have never had a good relationship with the town board until the last few years. So I appreciate it. The new town attorney that you hired, absolutely phenomenal and.
He's right behind you.
Shout out.
And Jeanette here, the new financial administrator, has been absolutely wonderful to work with. So, you know, I am, we are ecstatic that you guys have made changes and those. So, I mean, you know, we put in for a voucher, we get paid three days later and it, we have never, I mean, it's usually months. So that, thank you.
Good.
Uh, do you want to comment? Just, we have, and our financial administrator, if you wanted to just make a comment a little bit about the process of the RFP and the financial outlook for them.
Sure. So as everything said, the next step would be to prepare a resolution to go out and do an RFP for the construction costs, including any septic or sewer issues for funding. But it's great that you guys are going to do a fundraising effort. Anything helps. So between that and all the medical billings that have been ramped up or transport billings, that'll fund the majority of it. But it, it most certainly sounds like it's going to cover the debt service. So I guess the next step is really just to get the costs that, you know, accumulated for the project to see what we're dealing with. And then figure out a game plan, you know, what would the debt service be if we bonded over, you know, however long, 15 years, whatever. So, but we'll help with all that.
Adjust the years based on the overall cost. So whether this be a 10-year bond or a 15-year bond, based on the projected revenues of RVAC.
Yeah. Yep. And we're working on the next contract with RVAC with the medical billing portion. But they do set aside 20% for capital reserve for equipment. And we set aside money for the ambulances every year and the, whether it be a remount or a new. But normally we've been doing remounts because of how expensive it is to purchase new ambulances. So, you know, we've been trying to build up reserves for those as it comes along. So it's not a surprise when they come due. We've been forecasting out what years the vehicles will either need a new remount or a replacement. So, and it's, and also the responder vehicles as well. So that's been helpful. So I think the best part is just communication, which has been great. So if we keep the communication going, you know, we know what we're dealing with and, you know, we have a plan going forward. So.
Agreed. Excellent. Very good.
I love supporting all of you and everything that you're doing is phenomenal. I just have one question and I know I'm going to get laughed after this, but.
And you're it.
It's okay. No. So I've seen, and I don't know how realistic or we assume in the future, but drone ambulances to get, you know, over traffic. And basically what they do is pick up somebody and get them. Have you?
I haven't seen that. We do have.
Can we laugh at them now?
Laugh at that all you want. That's okay.
You just put an idea in Oliver's head.
I knew he's the guy to direct this thing.
We do at RVAC do have a drone that has search and rescue capabilities where it has thermal. When they had the wildfires this past year, we utilized it anytime that there's a boat issue or there's a kayak that flipped, we've already used the drone. It's really, really quick, cover really a lot of distance and not spend that much money on using a helicopter. So, but as far as picking somebody up, not yet.
But the, the, with the drone, it's not just locating like the victim out on a kayak or somebody out in the bay. But it has the capability to eventually carry a life jacket out there to drop it. So they have something to rest on it.
Buy that feature. So that's already a part of it. But the more important is that we can speak to the people.
Yeah.
So we can get close enough to them. It has a light that is almost as powerful as the one that's on the helicopter and it can light the whole scene up. And we can speak to patients. We can't really hear them back, but we can say, hey, you know, we're here, we see you, we're, we're here with you. And then once, you know, we can tell them, hey, in 10 minutes, a boat will be here to pick you up. So, you know, it was, it was a good purchase.
See, they laughed at me, but I'm so glad you're using the latest technology because it really works.
We're actually also.
Let's think about the size of the lithium battery to lift this body up. Come on, we got to get real good. But you know what?
Help ourselves.
Where we are today when we were kids growing up, right? So.
Hey, who do they get, a rocket ship could actually get caught with arms, right? You know, 20 years ago, they would have said, you're crazy, but.
But in those recent wildfires in Banning Hollow, the terrain, the land terrain was just deep crevasses and coming up and down. And so it took us a while, you know, I, I know I was on scene, but just to, to maneuver and how to get the brush trucks in the right place. Because you start going in one direction, then you hit that end and it's a deep terrain like, all right, let's backtrack a little. So that it's extremely helpful to be able to look at that and.
For navigation purposes as well.
Yep.
Fantastic. I love it.
And another piece of equipment that we need to protect in a, in a new building.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking forward to it. This is exciting. It is long overdue. And I'll also say this, I, I thank you for your patience over all these years waiting for this, this day to come. So, and.
We're happy it's here and the, the whole agency is excited about the new project.
Yeah, there's finally, the morale is starting to amp up a little bit, you know, people are just starting to get excited. You know, there's still some, is it going to happen? But, you know, you guys have been great. So we're happy to get it done. I mean, like I said, this isn't, this is no Poshma Hall. This is.
No.
As basic as you can get to get the job done. You know, we kept that cost in mind because we knew the taxpayers are not going to, if we have to bond that the taxpayers, taxpayers are not going to go for it. So, you know, we kept that in mind and this is.
And there's a social aspect to volunteer work. You know, when you have a good building, you have good, safe places to gather, to meet, to hold your meetings. It just creates an overall better work environment. And that's also one of the long-term goals here. When volunteers come here, they want to stay here because they like it here. And, and, and we've got to provide them with the equipment and the building that they need to keep those volunteers.
I don't see the debt service being a problem.
No, no, I don't, I don't believe it either.
At all. And number one, but I, I would really hope that when you go back, express to every, all the volunteers, because you have a lot of them, you know, how much we appreciate everything that they're doing.
And like Councilman Rothwell said, we can change the length of the bond to accommodate the debt service.
Exactly.
And just make it callable, you know, after eight years. And so this way if we can pay it off early and get rid of the debt service, we can do that. So.
That's where Jeanette comes in.
Now, does the town board, I mean, you know, we were, we've been talking a lot with Ken Rothwell to start trying to solicit some donations from some of the people. And we would like to start doing that now that, you know, we know what we're building. We have something to show.
So we'll, we'll put the RFP out. We'll determine the costs. We'll sit down with the town attorney as well and see like what we can do. Because as a government entity, how we collect donations, how it goes about, you know, and we'll talk to our financial administrator, Janet, we set up separate accounts. So that when somebody does make a donation to the, to the facility, to RVAC, that it's specifically guided to this particular structure. And so we will, we will have a next step is with the RFP, we'll, we'll sit down with both legal and financial to make sure that it's written in the most proper way. So we do it one time and we, we get the, an option of costs. And then to, to begin the fundraising efforts to make sure that we're meeting all the state guidelines, rules, regulations towards collecting donations and how it is applied to the facility.
Thank you all for the work that you do. We appreciate it. The residents appreciate it. You guys are awesome. And let's get this rolling. Thank you guys for coming in. We appreciate it.
Thank you guys.
Very exciting.
Thank you for coming.
It is exciting.
Excellent job. Thank you all.
Did you want to keep? You want to keep a big set?
You know, if you want to leave one, it'd be good to have in the office just for references and so forth.
You got it.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Hey, we're at, at time. It's good that this is happening.
Yes.
I'm really happy to hear, see this, hear this.
So just continuing with our work session, our next item on our list will be matters surrounding changes to the town board rules and procedures. Hubbard and Howard to come forward. Good morning, counselor. How are you?
I would have to tell you, I read the first draft, made my comments. I didn't get a chance to read this. I didn't expect it to today.
I sent it last night.
I know. That's.
I mean, basically, I mean, the, the changes I made were all keyed to the, you know, suggestions that I collected from the rest of the town board members. So.
And this is just an effort to make our meetings run smoother.
Yeah.
And taking everybody into consideration.
Yeah. So when, when I took over for Bob Coz, you know, almost four years ago now, three, three years ago plus, one of the things that I did want to do was do a review of the town board's rules. And I created a draft, I want to say in 2023 that was circulated. We didn't really end up moving on it, but with the, with the new year, I thought it would be a good time to revisit it. It keeps most of the, most of the prior town board rules, but clarifies a few things. And so what I'll, I'll go over some of the, some of where I've put in additions or expansions. We, what, what I crafted was clarification of the procedure for making the work session agenda. It specifically states that the department heads can contact the supervisor's office and request items to be added to the work session agenda. In the past, my office had fielded some complaints about things that should have gone to work session or were asked to go to work session and maybe it took too long to get there or, or it just didn't make it onto the agenda. So part of this was put together with a mindset to create a framework to make the work sessions more substantial and increase the transparency for the public. One of the things I've put in there, and this is, you know, this is up to the town board, is sort of a monthly report for each department head where they come in and just sort of provide an update as to, you know, relevant matters happening in their individual departments. It's, you know, somewhat similar to what we do with police code. we do with police code, clerk, and justice court now, but it would just be, it would be an expansion of that. Now, the frequency with which you do that, I put that in there once a month. I don't know that it needs to happen that often, but it was, you know, it's, it's just an idea for, for the board to consider. And then...
Where's that, where's that section on that, on the frequency of that?
That's gonna be rule two. It starts on page one and goes into page two.
I think a lot of this, we've all kinda agreed, you know, in working together over the last few years, that a lot of it, like, you know, when we do work sessions, we need items to be forwarded to us. We need to be able to post them online. We need to wanna give the chance for the general public to view them. So a lot of the stuff is that we've kinda all agreed to follow these kind of rules and guidelines just to, but now I think by putting it in writing, it just seems to make it more fair, so that, that, that there's, there's a written understanding. So no one is upset that, you know, we had one item on the agenda today that we did postpone till next week just because we didn't have the proper drawings and diagrams and documents to share with the general public. So this kinda clarifies a lot of that. So it's no, not, not longer just, you know, an idea, but it should be written so that, that, that everyone understands that in order to be on this discussion for Thursday, I need to submit my materials by this particular date.
Right. And it also gives the public an idea of how, you know, how you go through the process, right? It sort of clarifies that for them. So, you know, sometimes, you know, you hear from residents, and they don't really understand how things, you know, work through the town board. And so this, particularly with the work sessions, is designed to, you know, sort of open, open the window on that a little bit. It includes, similar to the department heads, I think I put in their quarterly reports by advisory committees, just to bring them in, and this is to some extent covered by the reports that the liaisons give monthly.
I like it, yeah, but...
But I mean, this, this, this would bring the members in, and they can, you know, provide, provide the town board with sort of their personal views on the issues they're dealing with, and thoughts about how those can be, how those can be addressed. The, the advisory committees typically are also supposed to field referrals from the town board. So this would also, this would also create a structure where if something is formally referred to an advisory committee by the town board, they would meet, and then the next work session after they have that meeting and do that discussion, they would come in and report to the town board on what their advice is with respect to that issue.
Eric, one of the things that, I really like that because I really think it's good for the committee to come up. You know, as a liaison, you can write down what they're talking about. What, I'm not sure is happening, I don't have, I don't know that it comes in here, but when things are discussed in the code committee, that the appropriate codes go to the appropriate committees.
Yeah, that's, so that's, yeah, that's, that's one thing that we, that we have. So we call it code committee. It's really a working group of usually one of myself or one of my deputies, someone from the building department, someone from the planning department, town board liaison, code enforcement, fire marshal, kind of get together and discuss either gaps in the code or issues with enforcement that we're, that we're dealing with. And we brainstorm drafts to circulate to the town board. Now, sometimes those codes probably should be referred to the appropriate advisory committee. So to Councilman, Councilman Kern's point, I think there should be, I guess, more formal recognition of how we, how we process that.
Yeah.
And then once they, once they reviewed it, if they wanna participate in the work session discussion that we ultimately have on the code proposal, that can happen. So I don't, I don't know how to work that in here. I mean, I can, I can find a way to work that in here if that's, if that's what the board wants.
I just think it's, I just think it's a good idea because just having been on committees for, I don't know, 16, 17 years, and not having some things that have taken so long to get changed, you know, dealing with previous town boards, it's just, it's frustrating and it's not productive.
Okay. So with respect to local laws, I could create a rule that identifies the town hall personnel that, you know, regularly meet monthly, how they'll brainstorm either proposed code amendments, however, however they come up, whether they're enforcement issues, whether they're new state regulations, whether they're just new ideas. And we will include something where we make efforts to identify appropriate advisory committees and refer the proposed, the proposed code out to them for review.
Yeah, 'cause often they're, they're more expert in what, you know, they're doing.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, if it's purely a code enforcement issue, I mean, I feel comfortable that my senior town investigator can handle it.
I feel very comfortable with that myself.
Let's see, what else in it? So sort of addressing decorum at town board meetings I thought was important. I know some town boards have rules about signs at meetings. I think Brookhaven doesn't allow them. I put that in here for the board's consideration. Other general decorum...
It's not even designed to that. Somebody holds something up, and then the person behind them can't see what's going on in front of them.
Well, it's, yeah, it's, it's a distraction, and the way I described it in here, you know...
What page are you on?
I'm on page four. It says, "Signs are served to distract, disrupt, and or obstruct viewing of a meeting, and given, and given the opportunities to speak for the town board on a variety of matters, on a variety of matters. The signs do not substantively contribute to the business of the town board."
And this is specific inside the boardroom? Like, they wanna be outside with signs?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, right, right.
Because I got a great sign one time.
And another, another of the, I won't call it a failing, but it's, it's not really clear in the prior town board rules, what, what we mean by decorum. It just sort of says that you're gonna be respectful in a, in a general sense, so I expanded on that. And that's letter C under rule four. And it relates to partisan political commentary, personal, impertinent, slanderous, or profane, profane remarks directed at town board members, town staff, general public applicants before the town board, or other invited guests. And it, it provides a procedure that's followed when that, when that happens. So the person who's doing it will be, you know, ruled out of order, and it's, and it's a warning. And if it continues, then that person can, will be removed from the meeting. And it clarifies that when we have police officers here, that the police officer might end up assisting in removal of the person if the person's refusing to remove.
But it, it's written, criticism is acceptable.
Correct.
You don't need to agree with us, and you have a right to, but just do it in a kind and courteous manner. That's all we ask.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't, doesn't even necessarily need to be kind. It just needs to be, it needs to be professional. It needs, it should be courteous, but it just, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be disrespectful on its face.
Well, yeah, you have, what you can't do is you have to refrain from personal, impertinent, slanderous, profane remarks, those kinds of things.
Yeah, I think that's, I think it really nails what we're trying to...
The last meeting we had with Scott's point, where we had a filled room, I had an individual call me the next day after the meeting saying that there were comments in the audience that I didn't hear up here on the dais, but that there were rude and derogatory comments made to certain individuals who were talking, you know, about a different position than the majority of the people here were. And that's, that won't be tolerated either. I mean, that's, it's not only directed for the board not to be, you know, the board can't talk to the public like that, the public can't talk to the board like that, but the public can't talk to the public like that either.
Correct.
And that's what we're looking to alleviate some of that. Just creates a safe environment to keep everybody...
Yeah. Right. So, you know, oftentimes before the town board, contentious issues come up. What we don't want is disagreements among the audience to disrupt your taking in testimony, comments, remarks regarding those issues.
And it's like, when a speaker turns to the audience and engages the audience, you have to, you know, you're here to talk to us, not the audience.
Right.
Bottom line is, we don't want people to feel intimidated to come up and speak.
Correct, correct.
To not feel as though they're gonna be heckled by other members of the audience as well.
Right. So that's, that's what I tried to clarify there by expanding on what we mean by maintaining proper decorum. With respect to comments on resolutions and all other matters, we, we looked into what other towns do and what's required under the New York State Open Meetings law. The town board isn't required to provide time for comment either on resolutions or general comment on any matter. You know, my recommendation is to keep comment because I think it's, I think the public's participation in that is important. Many other towns don't do five minutes. They do three minutes. That's, that's what I would, that's what I would recommend, you know. That, that can also be discretionary, like the town board has the ability to, if they wanna hear more from the public or provide...
Bring in an expert in a, like, a field of study, and you are a little more in depth.
And, and that can be, and that can be sort of considered as a motion made, you know, on the spot by the town board.
Yeah, I'm gonna tell you, I, I agree. I mean, if there's an expert that comes in, I believe that's something different. But I, I do know this, having done this, asked to time a meeting with the IDA, and they allowed this one person to go over, and then it just started, well, they, they spoke longer, why can't I speak longer?
That will be, always be the discretion of the supervisor in the board.
Okay.
Yeah.
And let me just talk, I just wanna add on to the, the limit of three minutes. And what it does provide is that, to me, you know, even in the summertime, we have meetings that start at 6 o'clock. You have a lot of seniors that don't like to drive after dark. And sometimes they come and they gather here, and when you have certain individuals that just, you know, there's, it's, you know, it may be a, a heated topic, and we have a room full of people that wanna speak, I think it's better to give at least a chance. Where mathematically, if you're in the back of the room, you can go, all right, so there's, there's 10 people up there. They all take three minutes. I'm gonna be here for 30 minutes. It gives a better idea, and it gives a chance for at least everybody in the room to speak. As opposed to, I have seen, when we have had public hearings or just general things, where seniors in the back shake their head, and they go, I have to leave. I can't, I don't have two hours to stay here. You know, I need to be home. I need to pick somebody up. It's whatever it may be. There's a better chance, I'd rather give everybody a chance to speak than have a few individuals come forward for longer periods of time, and then in the end, somebody else feels that they can't stay any longer, and they have to leave.
I don't wanna give you one more. Oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're not limiting public hearing speaking, right?
So that is...
I just mentioned that, so I just wanna make that clarification. This is just...
We looked in, we looked into that issue too, and there is guidance from the Department of State, Division of Local Governments, and it, it provides guidance on how to conduct public hearings. And what it suggests is if you have a heavily attended meeting, then you should consider limiting comment to three to five minutes. So that's something that the board could implement on sort of a case-by-case basis, if, if that's, you know...
Or you could do it in the beginning. You can say, I'm going to do round one, and I'm going to limit it to three minutes or five minutes in a public hearing. If anybody just needs to make a three-minute comment, they can come forth and do that. But we make a commitment at the conclusion, after we've gone through round one and everybody's had a chance to speak, we'll now open it up for, for only the comments that be as long as you want.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna respectfully disagree with that, and I'm gonna give you a good example. I was at a public hearing years ago and advocating for one thing. I waited three and a half hours to get up to the microphone to advocate, and it was about CBG money for a group. I waited three and a half hours, and people just kept rotating and coming up and coming up. And I was sitting there thinking to myself, like, they're repeating, a lot of them are repeating the same stuff. They're taking as much time as they wanna take. And, and I think it should be at the, if there's 50 people in here...
But, but the state, I believe state law says you have to have, have, you know, you can't limit a public hearing time. Is that correct?
You can. You can. You can. But really, when you decide to limit it, it should be because you have a lot of anticipated speakers.
Got it.
Right. And this, and this just sort of helps keep the hearing moving.
And it gives everybody the opportunity to speak.
Well, and another thing, another thing that the board could consider is with respect to public hearings, or you could even do this with comments as well, but you could have a sign-in sheet where the people who wanna get up and speak about a particular public hearing, sign up, and then they would be called up in that order. This way, you don't have a line waiting at the podium. People can stay in their seat, and they would be, they would be recognized, you know, formally, they get up, make their comments, go back to their seat. Next person gets called up, and, you know, that might be a more, that might be a more efficient and...
I saw the county legislated, legislation does, when they have people, they, you have to fill out a little card, and then they call you.
Yeah.
Take that a step further. Some towns actually have them fill out an index card with the question. So the people don't even have to come up to the microphone. The questions are all read by the clerk ahead of time. The people sign up for their question out front, and then you don't have a line or a problem at the microphone.
Okay.
Some towns do that also. I'm not looking to do that. I'm just putting it out there that that's how other towns might do it also.
Well, and if we, especially with public hearings, if we have the sign-in sheet where the person's writing their name and hamlet, this makes it easier for the town clerk who's, you know, keeping the minutes, and we have, you know, we have the person's name, because sometimes that just gets lost, or, you know, someone starts talking, you forget to ask them their name and their hamlet. This way, it's, it's all right there. So, we, so our planning board typically doesn't allow, or doesn't entertain comments on resolutions or general matters from, through Zoom. They do, they do accept comments via Zoom for public hearings. I think that could be, that's, that's a recommendation that I put in here as well. I think that it keeps the meeting moving forward. If someone, you know, has something that they feel compelled to say about a particular resolution, or on a general matter, they should appear and speak at the podium in public. Otherwise, they are always free to submit written comments. I know, you know, the town clerk takes those in, he distributes them to everybody. I know that you all read them.
And they become part of the record also.
One of the other, just a minor change with local laws, just clarifying that we would not be adopting local laws by ratification. So when a local law, you know, we have our public hearing on a local law, typically, at the next meeting, unless there's changes that are gonna be made, the, the resolution to adopt is put up. This happened once or twice in the past where we did a ratification of a local law, and I didn't really think that was the correct procedure to do it. So I put it in the rules that if we're going to adopt a local law, it's gonna be at a regular or duly called special meeting. If there's a compelling reason that we need to adopt a local law immediately, we can always call a special meeting. I, I just, I don't like the, I don't like the optics of doing it by ratification, and I think it makes, I think, I think it makes the, it opens up arguments as to the validity of the law. So that's, that's why I added that in. We reduced the number of votes required to call, call a resolution off the floor from a unanimous vote to three. This, I think, helps move resolutions along because if one town board member is absent, we can't, we can't pull anything off the floor. So this would still require a majority of the board to agree to pull something off the floor, but allow you to pull something off the floor if one town board member was absent for any reason.
I just wonder about that. Well, I guess it doesn't matter. Never mind.
Well, it would, it would still require a majority. So even if two town board members are absent, you can pull the resolution off the floor, or if one of the town board members didn't think that you should, then you won't be able to, because you need the three.
Remember, just pulling it off the floor doesn't mean passing a resolution. It means bringing it up for discussion. It could still be voted down.
Right.
What page are you on?
That is, that is on page nine or 10. It's under rule 14, page 10.
Nine?
Page 10.
Page 10? Okay. Page 10, okay.
Resolution from the floor. Does this go for a public hearing?
No.
Does not.
So, uh, general recommendation from Association of Towns and the State Division of Local Governments is that every Board should have adopted rules. The, the way, the way the meetings are conducted are really typically up to the supervisor as to setting the agenda. And then however the Town Board agrees that it should work going forward. So this, this just sort of formalizes it, it builds, like I said, it builds on the prior, on the prior rules. And most of, most of the rules include, include a provision that allows the Town Board discretion to deviate with, you know, in a, in a particular instance with agreement of the majority of the Board.
When was the last time it was updated?
The last time it was updated, I believe it was in 2019. And before that, I believe it was in, I believe it was 2012.
Okay.
So.
Here's what I said, you know, and then, then the pandemic came and then Zoom came and lots of things to address that just weren't, weren't, you know, under consideration probably at the time, the last time it was revised.
Most Town Boards also have stopped using Zoom altogether.
Yes.
All right, there's a lot in here.
Final, sorry. There's, there's just one other change. It deals with what happens if resolutions are tabled at the end of the year. It just provides that anything on the table at the end of the year is going to be withdrawn or.
Off the table.
Yeah, it's going to be taken, it's going to be taken off the table and not acted upon unless it was tabled at the meeting prior to the end of the year.
So a resolution can be tabled for 13 months.
Twelve and a half.
All right, there's a lot in here for us to digest, I know we just got it a couple of days ago. So, you know, read through it, you have any questions, obviously, we can go to Eric and ask and we'll bring this up at a future Board meeting for adoption. Okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you.
It sounds like the Paul Metry, I like that piece, that's you.
That's just like a technical term for attorney.
No, wait, I know, but, you know.
All right, next up we have matters surrounding the 2025 beach stickers for first responders and volunteers and we have Ray Coyne. Good afternoon, good morning.
This is quick, I'm going to, I want to float a resolution, we do this every year, to allow the local fire departments and ambulance companies a free beach sticker or four by four sticker. We've been doing it since I've been here and I just want, before I wanted, floated the resolution, I wanted to speak to the Board first. Just the numbers, last year, we, we did 172 total to the fire department and ambulances. A hundred took parking, six took boat trailer and 66 took four by four and parking. So it's not a lot of stickers, but it's enough. And how they do it is the chiefs of each department have to submit a list of the current active firefighters, EMTs. And at that point, we make sure we check their ID, check them off the list and they get provided a sticker.
It's a no brainer for me, absolutely.
Right.
It is, 100%, you've got firefighters and EMTs on your beaches. Why do we not, why wouldn't we not give them a free pass?
Yeah.
You know, they're ready to help out in an emergency, it's absolutely.
They're volunteering their time for the community.
Yeah, it's worked out great and I just want to make sure this Board's on board.
We should probably codify this, actually, why are we bringing it up every year?
Why don't we just, we should just codify it. I, I agree to codify, it makes, you know, absolute sense.
That would, that would be easier for us, we could put it in with the, the first resolution of the year.
Then it saves you one time not coming here once.
Although I love coming and hanging out with the Board.
All right, so we'll get a.
May I ask you just one, to just expand on that a little bit, so this, this is always great, of course, but I feel like the entire Town Hall staff as a whole is our eyes and ears also throughout around the town and stuff like that. We do have employees that, that work in the departments here that don't live in the town of Riverhead, but again, they're still our eyes and ears. We ever had a consideration to allow town workers, whether, you know, if, if I do have somebody that lives in Brookhaven or Southhold that they can utilize this. I just feel like it's, it is more eyes and ears, it is our staff. So when they see something down there, this is broken, this needs to be fixed or anything else, there's a problem, or whatever it may be. I just, I'm curious about what everyone else's thoughts are about that.
I did bring it up, go ahead, go ahead.
I spoke to Anne Marie Prudential about that and legally it poses a problem because you're, you're now dividing the town workers into two different groups, one that lives in the town, one that doesn't. The one that lives in the town has the benefit to use our beaches, the one who doesn't does not. So you're giving one group more, more of an advantage than you are the other. And she said legally that becomes an issue.
What would be the advantage if, if the out of town person, the, the town employees pay for the bench? I mean for their.
Yes.
Right.
Let's make it all the same cost.
So if they all pay, if the out of towners pay, was, I would like.
I think, yeah, I was going to say, I think because the people in the town are paying the taxes that provide the amenities for the beaches. The out of towners aren't.
Right. And that, that would be the benefit included.
I just understand.
It's kind of silly when even listening to myself say it.
No, but it's.
It's kind of silly, but it does make sense and from a legal standpoint, I understand it.
You get one employee calling it out and forget it.
Right.
You got an issue on your hand, so.
Didn't know if all employees could just pay the same price, utilize the same service, but we would have more eyes and ears on all the, the parks and so forth around town to see, you know, picnic table or something broke over the weekend and just.
Yeah, that's what I'm for, I just think it's, it's probably a little bit of a risk for the town.
Well, you know, we talked about at one point, and we need, I think we need to revisit this and maybe there's a way to come to a solution on this, right? Is that like what Southhold does, where they, you can sponsor somebody, right? And then we, we know we have limited beaches to do that at, which is Pier Avenue, Iron Pier, excuse me, and South Jamesport. So maybe bring that back to the Rec Committee and see if there isn't a creative solution to this where, you know, it doesn't cause any problems.
Yeah, bring it to the Beach Committee, yeah, I'm going to see them.
And those guys too, yeah, Beach Committee.
Rec Committee, Capital Projects, Beach Committee.
Bring it to the Beach.
Just an idea.
Love those guys.
Yeah, I always see them, I always see them.
Our, our beaches, Duaneau Parks, Roman through the town, because if they, they work in Town Hall, they'll come here, they're more likely to stop by your office and say, hey, this is what I saw, you know, this is what's happening.
I'll do some research on it, see other towns do it, I'll bring it to the legal and see if we can get around it and I'll bring it back.
I mean, we put rockets in space, we should be able to come up with this one.
And Ray, thank you for the different things the Perennials are doing, they had the skating.
That's Ashley's team, yeah.
They had that yesterday.
Yeah, they had, they went to the ice rink yesterday.
Yes.
Uh, it was great, they, I think I had 10 or 12 that, that showed up and it's, it's slowly building.
Yeah.
And Pekonic was, was nice enough to give us the entire rink to ourselves, although we didn't ask for that, so.
And they're playing Marjon, the seniors are playing Marjon here in the building in February.
I got to learn how to play.
In February.
The only way I knew Marjon was through Seinfeld when they, when Estelle was playing.
Jigsaw puzzles also downstairs in the building for the seniors in February.
Yeah, they utilize them downstairs, yeah.
And you have bowling scheduled in February as well.
Yeah, the Perennials are for, for the, we call it the younger seniors, the ones that don't want to go to the senior center. 55 and up, that's still athletic and it's starting to build up, that's Ashley's program and, and she's doing a great job with it.
You guys do an amazing, amazing job.
Agreed, agreed, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, Ryan. Last but not least, we have matters surrounding the amendment to fire protection operating fees and that will be with Bob Kern and Fire Marshal Andrew Smith. Good morning, good morning.
All right, so last year we passed a resolution to take all the fire marshal fees out of the code and make them into a table that could be changed or amended by a Town Board resolution. What I'm looking to do today is to add a fee. When we did this, we didn't capture the potential for battery energy storage and solar. So the way that I would have had to calculate it would be based on square footage is what we normally do for a construction progress, project. Doesn't really apply with these because they're outdoor installations, they are very large in size.
It's not a building.
So I did a little research and this is pretty much what the town of Brookhaven does also. They ran into a similar issue where they added these fees this year as a lot of the towns are still in a moratorium, we're not, Brookhaven's not. So I talked to their Fire Marshal Department and this is what they did. They added a construction fee specific to energy storage and solar and they also added an annual operating fee because it's important that we get there and inspect these annually to ensure the safety of these projects. So what I'm proposing is to add the fees for the construction and also add an annual fee so that we can issue these projects operating permits and have some oversight annually.
I think that's a great idea.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and one of the, one of the things that Andrew heard through this, which I thought was great, and this Board has talked about it, they, the town of Brookhaven adds a CPI to all their fees every year. So that we don't ever get, find ourselves, we haven't changed something in 10 years or 15 years or 20 years, we keep up with this CPI.
Yeah, so they, on their organizational meeting every year, they have the percentage of change and they just update their fees annually that way. Based on whatever the figures they.
Right.
I like it. And, and we did a rough, well, a rough estimate, I think it was yet, two, two days ago, right?
Yeah.
And looked at what Andrew is bringing in into his department and it's nominal. I mean, you're bringing in probably close to 300 if not more.
Yeah, a little, yeah, a little more.
So, but if, if we were to attach the three point blah, blah, blah percent onto it, it would have amounted to an increase of $12,000 over that roughly $300,000 fee, which is something that, you know, we are looking to do in every department so we never get caught back, we haven't changed something in 20 years, 10 years or whatever, you know, the case may be.
Yeah, I mean, all, all our overhead and stuff goes up every year regardless, right? So it's kind of falls in line with what we have to do budgetarily and things like that.
Yeah, it would be nice to set an index being it's just done.
Yeah. I'd love to see a spreadsheet where they just go boom.
There's so much town business.
It's automatically, January 1st, it flips over to the new.
There's so many things that, there's so much town business that goes on and that some of these things could, they could be automatically done, they take care of themselves. Because, you know, it gets delayed one month, two months, whatever it may be and then it's a loss of revenue.
We, we had, had our fees changed in probably 20 something years. So like, if you did that every year, you would have been okay, you know, you wouldn't have lost that.
You wouldn't have to do a big chunk at one time.
Right.
Nope.
And the annual fee, I think is great to go out.
Yeah, and that's important, I know it's important to the fire service that we get eyes on these things because it is a point of contention, everybody's a little worried about it. But if we can go there and make sure just, you know, the minimum safeguards are in place every year and update any emergency contacts, things like that.
Access roads wash out, things like that, changes, growth, trees.
Yep.
Andrew.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you much, Andrew.
Your diligence in your department is fantastic, service to this town, thank you.
All right. Excellent, excellent. Okay, that ends our open session. We now have the following items on executive session. Oh, forgot about resolutions, yes. Because I didn't have my paper in front of me. All right, we're going to go to resolutions now. We're going to be out of here shortly, we have a 12 o'clock call on executive session that we have to be upstairs for, so.
Okay, if the Board's ready, resolution number one, ratifies budget transfer for highway equipment purchases. Number two, authorizes the removal of fixed assets. Number three, authorizes employees to attend IAAI Conference 2025. Number four, amends resolution 2025-94. One of the justices is going to attend a conference and the location has changed.
And on one before that, that's our Fire Marshal's going to training update.
Resolution five, appoints a call-in park attendant to the Recreation Department. Number six, appoints a call-in assistant recreation leader to the Recreation Department. Appoints, number seven, appoints a call-in park attendant to the Recreation Department. Number eight, ratifies the rehire of call-in employees to the Recreation Department. Number nine, appoints a part-time office assistant to the Recreation Department. Number 10, reappoints member to Recreation Advisory Committee, Savio. Number 11, terminates inactive employees from the Police Department.
These are employees that have been on lists for like callouts. Some of them are detention attendants that they call out on a as-needed basis. And these are all people that haven't responded for a very long time to callouts or haven't submitted a resignation letter. So they're just cleaning up people that, otherwise you got to go through the list and call all these people every time and they, they haven't come out in years. So they're just housekeeping that list.
Okay, resolution number 12, accepts the retirement of a construction equipment operator. Number 13, accepts the retirement of a principal account clerk. Number 14, authorizes submission of a letter of intent and execution of contract by the supervisor for operation and maintenance grant program to New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation, EFC. This is for Pump Out Boat, we do this every year. Number 15, authorizes Community Development Division to seek grant funding for Wesley Dean Ackley Memorial Skate Park Project. Number 16, extends bid nunk pro tunk for 2023 or newer chassis, 10-foot 304 stainless steel dump body, custom low mount hitch, 10-foot stainless steel material spreader, 11-foot snowplow and central hydraulics for the Highway Department. Number 17, awards bid for census water meters and accessory equipment or reasonable equivalent and repair to the meter reading equipment. Number 18, resolution calling public hearing regarding capital improvement for the proposed electrical upgrades at Plant Number 7, Riverhead Water District, Project Number 16. That public hearing will take place on February 13th at 6:00 PM. Number 19, authorizes Town Clerk to publish and post notice to consider a local law to amend Chapter 229 of the Riverhead Town Code entitled "Excavation and Grading, Section 9 thereof, Fees." That public hearing will take place on March 4th, 2025 at 2:10 PM. Number 20, authorizes supervisor to execute polling place agreement with Suffolk County Board of Elections for the use of the George Young Community Center and the Riverhead Senior Center for 2025 and 2026 primary and general elections.
There's nothing here, Town Hall?
No, that's when, that's early voting at Town Hall, this is for the actual election day that we always use.
Thank you.
Number 21, approves special event, Chapter 255, application for Home Depot plant sale.
Spring times are coming.
Number 22, ratifies the resignation of an accountant. Number 23, authorizes continued service with Municipal CMS LLC for website maintenance.
Yes, we're just extending a contract we have with Municipal One.
Our existing website provider.
Our existing website while the work is being done. That contract was going to be, it ended before we were going to be ready with the new website. So we've extended the coverage to keep the old website.
To bridge that gap.
To cover, to cover the gap until the new one.
Right.
Exits, which hopefully, folks, we will have within the next six months.
Right. Resolution 24, authorizes reduction of permanent security, permanent, I'm sorry, performance security for Overlook Homes Major Subdivision.
Okay, after our, Vinny Guadalu, uh.
Guardiola?
Guardiola. Looked at the security for the subdivision, it was changed from 283,000 to 214,000 based on the actual work that was being done around the project itself.
Number 25, grants Chapter 229 excavation exportation permit for Cauliflower Square LLC, northwest corner of Old Country Road, Mill Road, Riverhead, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-101-111. And this is still at the old rate because the new rates haven't kicked in yet.
Correct.
Number 26, accepts donation of temporary use of freezer trailer for Senior Center.
I want to thank Mr. Haggy, the Senior Center freezer went down and the compressor shot and it's going to be a time period before the new compressor can come in and be installed. And in the meantime, we have thousands of dollars worth of food in the freezer down at the Senior Center. at the senior center, and Mr. Hegy was kind enough, he has a, a towable freezer unit, a 32-foot trailer, that he's letting the town use during the duration of waiting for the new compressor to come in and, and the work to be done on it. So thank you so much to Mr. Hegy, we really appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
It's a big help to the senior center as well, because they get the food on-site temporarily, as opposed to alternative locations off-site they were exploring, so. Number 27, ratifies the settlement of legal action against Canal House LLC, DBA Victorville by the Sea, and Victor Ozeri.
Very good.
Number 28, authorizes supervisor to execute agreement with interpreter for justice court, Avalar Gonzalez. Number 29, authorize the supervisor to execute agreement with interpreter for justice court, Number 30, authorize the supervisor to execute agreement with interpreter for justice court, Castro Taboda. Number 31, authorize the supervisor to execute agreement with interpreter for justice court, And number 32, authorize the supervisor to execute agreement with interpreter for justice court, Espinoza.
The reason is, so many of them, they're all part-time, and some of them aren't available on certain days and whatnot, so we needed to have a list of people, because the prior one that we had was available all the time, and we couldn't find anybody full-time, so. All right, that closes our open session. In a moment, I'll ask to close out the meeting, but, so we can go into executive session to discuss matters under personnel, matters surrounding possible change and status of an employee, that's with Frost and Striplenteo. We have matters surrounding possible hiring of an employee, Frost. We have matters surrounding a possible leave of absence, Striplenteo. We have matters surrounding possible committee appointments, Hubbard. We have matters surrounding change in status of an employee, Howard and Prudential. And then under contractual, we have Richard Zuckerman, matters surrounding contractual agreements between the town of Riverhead and the PVA and SOA, that's with Hubbard and Rothwell. We have matters surrounding the sale of real property with Prudential, Thomas, and Hurley. And we have matters surrounding contractual agreement between the town of Riverhead and Environmental Facilities Corporation with Thomas, Diopola, and Dillingham.
That's a lot of work out there.
That is a lot of work out there. At the time, I would like to make a motion to close open session and go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, open session is closed, we will retire to executive session. Everybody have a great weekend. I hear 50 degrees is coming around on Monday, which sounds nice. Stay safe and stay healthy.
Just one side note, Justin, thank you very much, you helped us with all the RV drawings and getting them all sit, you know, situated and laid out for us today, so I appreciate that, thanks, Justin.
Nice job, Justin, thank you. Everybody have a great weekend, bye-bye.